Okay, if you'd please stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Straight, can I call on you to...
Sir, I have the following. Thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning. We thank you for the beautiful rain we've been receiving and for all that it's gonna bring forth for Hampshire County's fields and gardens. We just, again, thank you for your many blessings. We pray that you would be with us this morning, God directed all that said and done, then you might be glorified in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll now call to order the Hampshire County Commission meeting today, Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. And we will start with the minutes. Each commissioner had a digital copy of the minutes to look at prior to, so I would approve a motion or any corrections found that were needed.
I move that the minutes be approved as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the minutes of our last meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, we will move on to the President's and Commissioner's report. I have a report from the Health Department that they send us usually around once a month or close to that. So I'll read over that report that the Health Department Director sent us. I'll hit the highlights on that for you as the public had a ask that we do that every so often. So we have vaccinated 2,778 individuals in our community with boosters, first and second doses of Moderna Pfizer and Pediatric Pfizer. That was from October 21 through April 23. Vaccinated six individuals in April and held six available COVID vaccination clinics. Still providing free home test kits to individuals in the community. Distributed 276 kits in the community to area business schools, nursing homes, and families during the month of April. The Health Department recommends following the newest COVID guidelines, which are if you're exposed to COVID, as a contact, you can wear a mask for 10 days or test on day five. Do not have to quarantine unless symptomatic or positive case. The Health Department is doing Pfizer vaccine for six months old and older every Monday, and Moderna for age 18 and older every Tuesday at the Health Department. Appointments are needed for those vaccine clinics. No cases and no COVID-related death cases in April to be reported. So far documented Hampshire County since 2020, 75 total COVID-related deaths. Additionally, they're doing monthly in-person food classes at the Health Department along with the online services that go with that. They are currently still understaffed in nursing and have been posting with the Department of Personnel and in our local newspaper and Weekender for RN LPN positions. And that was submitted to the Commissioners by the Administrator for the Hampshire County Health Department, Tamitha Wilkins. And that's all I need to touch on. Rest of it could be touched on in the agenda, so I'll pass the floor on to Commissioner Hott.
Okay, I attended, let me see, first of all, I attended the, the Central Hampshire PSD had a special meeting on the 19th of April, I believe, and they voted there to proceed with the project as revamping and bringing the Princeburg sewer plant up to requirements that the Chesapeake Bay Initiative requires. And that was the only action taken at that meeting. I attended a Region 8 Real Development Board meeting. The only thing there that we've done, we had a, we approved the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan, and the rest of the, the meeting was just normal housekeeping of the, of the board. I attended the Solid Waste Authority meeting the same day, and it, the only thing they'd done there, we had, they'd done some committee assignments and approved a, approved a grant application. And the board appointments were redone at that meeting. Attended the HCSA meeting, and there we had, let me see, we had an update on our amelices, and they reviewed the applications for the Deputy Director of the, of the HCSA, and we established a committee to, to do the interviews for the applicants for the Deputy Director position. I received some, a few phone calls to, well, one of them was, was something we addressed some time ago about the, the slightly or unsightly at the Francis Mill, the old Francis Mill where they have a, I guess it's sort of like a yard sale type thing. I received some calls about that. However, I've been unable to come up to give them any kind of solution to, to help them with that. And the only other calls I received was concerning the school board, and I also haven't been able to come up with any solutions for that. Other than that, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hott. Commissioner Cannon?
Thank you. Attended the Committee on Aging meeting, mainly just briefing on finances and things, budget revisions, tabulating our total donations and things. Talked about the 15.6 percent increase on the PEIA insurance for everybody. We're doing some renovations to our Springfield Center. The Governor appointed a new Commissioner of Senior Services, which we spoke with. Just a little rundown, we, we had $540,000 allocated as congressional delegated spending for in-home care. And we also had some COVID monies that, that were left that cannot be used for really anything other than retention bonuses and just overall employee raises. And this allocation would, would be, the only individuals that would qualify for would be our in-home nurses, so we're trying to, when, when you have nurses that make 30-some dollars an hour, 40-some dollars an hour, and ours are making 10, $12 an hour, I didn't necessarily feel bad giving them a pretty substantial raise. Overall, there's about 300 and approximately $300,000 that we can use in allocations for in-home care, and so far, we spent $181,000. Last meeting, the County Commission received a recovery letter about our jail bills and potentially having beds open for this Recovery West Virginia, Recovery Point West Virginia, which I believe we talked about reaching out to the judges. So I talked to Judge Carl, and I think we're all in agreement that it's, not only is it a little bit presumptuous, but it's maybe even illegal, according to his opinion, for them to solicit us or to try to influence us to bicker or put pressure on our judges in the way that they sentence individuals. And he, and he turned this into the Supreme Court, and, and they already use this program, so we really weren't sure what, what the, the pressure to use their services was all about. But nevertheless, I did, Commissioner Hott talked about us looking into it, so I figured I would oblige that. PBTA Transportation met. We're doing very well financially, especially if we could just collect our outstanding payments. $79,000 in outstanding bills. Pilgrims is always a little behind, and $25,000 owed from Trex, so we're working on implementing some sort of policy to, to catch up there. But overall, just going over the finances, we had our annual audit that the Board had to certify. And I did want to brief the Commission just on some, some numbers. They, they do go after federal and state assistance pretty hard, and I support that, so they can keep their hand out of the county taxpayers' pockets as much as possible. But this is the fastest-growing transportation system in the state, and funded to the tune of 3.29 million between federal and state assistance. So I think we have the best director in the state. It's, I'll share the, the charts with you gentlemen. Just the growth in the last two years is really unprecedented, so it's a great thing. It's a program that's really working, and it's looking really promising that we'll get our hydrogen allocation for, so there will also be a, they'll be at the Job Fair coming up, May 17th. So for those that didn't know, there's a Job Fair at the deaf and blind school, May 17th at 10:00 a.m. In the last Saturday of every month, we're giving rides to people that, that want to ride the Potomac Eagle train to Petersburg. Economic Development, I believe, our new Executive Directors here, and the Mayor, and Tamitha Wilkins, so I won't get too long-winded about that. But, and then the Cape and Bridge Tech Park Utilities, Mr. Mans is here as well, so I will draw back and punt until later on this one. And I did want to tell you, gentlemen, that Commissioner Shechem from Hardy County had reached out, and I'm not sure if you gentlemen are aware about Allegheny Wood Products is filing for a DEP permit for methyl bromide. I did do a little bit of research for y'all. Would you give one of these, Bob? So basically, it's a, it's a mainly banned, highly, highly toxic chemical that is pretty much exclusively reserved for farmers, and it's mainly injected into the soil very deeply, so the air pollution is, is not quite as heavy. But in this instance, they'll be treating their wood products above ground, and they're, they're seeking a permit to dump 9.8 tons of this methyl bromide into our air. And based on my research, if, if approved, the location, this outfit will be located within 10 air miles or less of Hampshire County border. So I thought you guys ought to be aware. The, the DEP, I talked to the DEP, and they said the gentleman that was there had been there for 10 or 15 years, and he said in all his years that he'd never seen more public backlash for an individual project than this one. So they're protesting pretty heavy. I don't know if Hampshire County citizens were, were there at the protest, but I just figured y'all ought to be aware. And if you see my little briefing there, just, I'm not a medical doctor, but that is the research of a medical doctor, and the effects of that toxic substance going into our air. South Branch Valley Day Report, we meet coming up, and I did meet with our Executive Director. I notice he is very, very adamant about grant funding, which is most of the time a great thing, as long as the matches stay the same. So I kind of wanted to have a conversation with him to set up a Plan B in the case that we set up all these programs with all these employees, and for some reason, he doesn't get one of these big grants that, that he's going after, that it won't somehow come back for the County Commission to fund. And we have a pretty good safety net if that were to happen. I think this, these taxpayers from this county would be pretty well insulated. So that was a worry, because if you look from the last administration to his, he's going after things pretty heavy, and they, they already owe us some money. So I think they're doing pretty good at paying us back. Ed Morgan called me last night after my little girl's softball game and said that they knew they couldn't be on the agenda for today. They'd like to be on the agenda for next month, if it pleased the Commission. He said that they, they have responded in, in hold to all of the proposed questions, and he, he sort of asked me to ask the Commission whether we'd like him to present in person or just send a letter in. So we can mull that over later. Ironically, I did have fairground road calls as well, like Commissioner Hott, and I'm sure all the Commissioners, for the absolutely pathetic, I swear that that mill is became to our community, and, and everyone has to pass it when they tour our county or go to our fair. But also, there, there is an illegal dumping ground and junkyard on past the fairgrounds. If you crest the hill and come down Second Drive Way on the left, it's basically an illegal junkyard. So I know the Sheriff recommended to call the Commissioner Highway, so I've let these individuals, at least tried to help lead them in the right direction. The Commissioner of Highways has opened an investigation on the illegal junkyard. Talked to Matt Hott. He, the day that I talked to him, the very next day, he, he was going to meet with the contractor for the Romney Senior Center Kitchen Project. Other than that, the rest of my work will be gone over on the rest of the agenda, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for those reports. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution for May as Community Action Month. Okay, and I will just read this short proclamation for Eastern Community Action Month, and it starts, "Whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas, community action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is celebrating 59 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans." Now, therefore, I, Brian Eglinger, President of the Hampshire County Commission, do proclaim May 2023 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Eastern West Virginia Community Action Agency, doing business as Eastern Action. In testimony whereof, I have set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Hampshire County, West Virginia, on this ninth day of May 23rd. If the Commissioners so please, I would...
I move we authorize the President to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded to approve the signature for the recognition and resolution of May as Community Action Month. Yeah, I should, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passed. Okay, and moving right along, we will go to our 9/20 appointment, which is Hampshire County Historic Landmarks Commission in reference to grant activity. Ladies, would you like to come up?
Yes. We have been busy. Okay, I've given you a copy of what we are going to present to you this morning. Since this Historic Landmarks Commission will become an independent commission under the County Commission on July the 1st, we've reviewed bylaws and found only one change needs to be made. We need to remove the Planning Commission from our bylaws. We assume that the bylaws were written by SHPO when the Landmarks Commission was established in 2007. We'll submit an amended copy to you in June for your approval. So you have any questions on that one?
No, I am.
Okay. All right, the second item we have is that we've contacted SHPO with questions that we needed in order to guide us in pertaining to becoming independent. And I was amazed that the day I sent those questions, they got them right back to me the same day, which I think is probably a first, but they were very prompt. And with the Washington Trails, we drove, we took a day and drove that trail. And we had questions about the state signage because Virginia refused to put up those signs, saying that round signs belong to railroads. So we, it took me a couple of weeks to get an answer, but we found out that there is specific signage for West Virginia, and we have chosen not to participate in that trails because their signage does not comply with what the state wants. So, yeah. The other thing is that we've sent, the draft for our grant has been sent to SHPO for approval, and as soon as we get that back from them, we will be sending out letters to six contractors in order to do the survey. Now, we found out that because their part of the grant is under $20,000, we do not have to do that extensive advertising that you usually do. So, so that's going to cut down the wait time for getting this grant started.
Okay, this is, this is for the cemeteries?
Yes, cemetery grant.
And we approved, when we approved this, this grant application that you guys sent in, was there a dollar amount at the County Commission? Did we?
The grant's back's been signed.
Eight thousand, 250.
Okay, okay. So we agreed to, we did agree.
Yes. I think the county's, county's is like $8,000 is your, your share. So, yeah. But, but by us not having to do all that advertising, it's going to save us a lot of time, so that, that will be a big help.
When you say you're gonna do six, are you gonna pick just one out of those six?
Well, what we, what we have to do is, we have to send out applications or proposals to six. They send us back their quote on what they will charge us, and then we choose one from those six. Okay, we also have created a website for people to get information. I've given, I even put my phone number on there in case somebody wants to call. I get the calls anyway, so might as well put my name on the website. But we do now have a website for people to contact us on information about how to, how to apply for registration on the National Registry. So. And our last item was that we have two items left that we need to deal with before July the 1st, and that is to find storage for artifacts, and we need to create a budget. And I know that the county has given us some money. I don't know just how much it is, but we need to create a budget on how that money will be spent. So, do you have any questions for us?
So as far as the storage, how, how much, how, how much stuff do you guys have?
Uh, we're not really sure, because when, when Carol and I went over to the building and looked to see what, we found some things, but we're going to need to store the artifacts from...
Hook's Tavern.
Hook's Tavern. We also have, we need a file cabinet for our records and for our minutes, so that anyone who, those minutes have to be made public record, and when anyone who wants to look at them can see them. So.
We do have an option that maybe we should discuss. HistoricHampshire.org can place the minutes. They already have some minutes. They can place them online so that they're available 24/7, and somebody from IDU doesn't have to come all the way up here.
Is that, or that's Charlie Hall's website?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still, we still will need a place to store those, because some people do not have internet or computers and what have it.
So now everything's in the planning office, we think?
Yes. Yeah.
The minutes are in the planning office.
Yeah. We have to send, we have to send our minutes to SHPO too. They have, they have to have a record of our minutes. So.
So we'll look for your proposed budget?
I, we haven't been given any...
You're seeking some guidance on a proposed budget?
Do what?
You're seeking guidance on a proposed budget? Okay, I misunderstood you. I, I thought you meant that you guys would mull it over and make a presentation to us. Is that how you understood it?
Well, I, I think, I think they should, and then we can go over and see.
Oh, sure.
If you guys come up with your budget... If you guys come up with your budget, then I think we can look at it and...
Well, I think the County Commission has set aside something. We just don't know any numbers yet.
I think the Planning Commission done that. I think...
Yeah.
If I'm cor, if I'm correct. I think the Planning Commission designated five thousand, does that sound right? Anyway, some money.
Yes.
But as far as this Commissioner, I think that you guys should present us a budget and, and let us go over it, and then I, I think that would be the best way. Because you, you certainly need a budget. You certainly need a way to adminis, you know, to have a, somebody administrate your office as far as your minutes, and, and you need, most of our committees or agencies have somebody that takes minutes. You know, I know you have a secretary.
Right.
But I don't like to, if I'm a sec, if I was appointed secretary, and I'm also a voting member, I don't like to be there trying to take minutes and try to concentrate on what's being said. So, I feel that maybe you could put that in your budget, getting somebody part-time maybe to help with your administrative, with your administration of your office.
Well, we're thinking things...
Does that make sense?
Yeah. We're thinking things like postage, you know. We don't know if we're gonna have to have a place, pay rent, a place, you know, have, store artifacts. So, we're coming up, we're, we're trying to think of the different things we know we'll need. With this cemetery survey, it's possible that we may need some mileage money because some of us may have to go take days and go with those people because they don't know where they're going to be, you know. So, just, it's, it's going to be minimal right now, you know, because... So, anybody have any other questions?
Do you agree with what we talked about, Brian?
Yeah, I, I think they should present us something, and we can, that'll give us a starting point. We'll go from there.
Okay, okay, for your, the budget.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And I thank you for doing all the research on the, the above different bullet points here.
Well...
Yeah.
You know, it was like when, at first, it was not, nothing was said about other states refusing to do this, and that, that, with those trail signs. And when we started, it seemed like every time we got information, there were more conflicting things going on. And it's like, you know, we want to be sure that we're on the right page with the state, with the county, because this is tax, taxpayers' money that we're going to be using for this, so, you know.
Yeah, I believe it was between five and ten thousand that the planning...
Yeah.
...out, or proposed, the Commission allocate out of their budget.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I'm guessing we would delete that from planning and put it into this new, we ought to take it out of their account.
I think we can work it out, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the research on the signs. To be honest with you, would've never thought of that. That's an excellent point, because a lot of times, these other states think they know best, but...
Well, I had to go to Cindy Butler from the railroad in order for her, she finally found somebody that could give us an answer, but it took quite a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we have the Hampshire County Development Authority, requests for Executive Director transition funding.
Ladies?
Good morning.
Gentlemen, just a little briefing. We definitely created a pretty stringent job description. We think we have a, a great candidate, a well-educated candidate, a business individual. Ran several businesses. As I always say, the fact that he's a hot, we won't hold against him. But that, what, the, I guess the ask today, as it was presented to me, is, is not all positions are created equal, especially one as influential and/or important as Executive Director of Economic Development with all the projects going on. And I ran into this with the Committee on Aging, you know, with that director going out the door. Some of these positions can just be replaced, and they can train themselves, and others, it really, really gives you a, a lot of momentum to hit the ground running if you have the previous executive director lead you into all the projects that we have open, et cetera. And Mrs. Wilkins also had a sort of a, a story that rung true to me on all her struggles that wouldn't have been if she would've had an opportunity to keep the previous individual that was in her position there to help train her, so. I'll let them talk. I, I definitely, I'm not sure, I, I didn't read the paper, but I heard that the paper alleged a certain amount, and, and I don't, I never said that amount, but, but we can, we can talk about that later.
Commissioner Cannon, before we start, the reason I was standing is I was hoping that you would introduce our candidate, and actually, just this morning, he signed the papers, so it is official. If you would like to introduce him.
Gentlemen, Mr. John Todd Hott, thank you for coming in.
Good morning.
Welcome, Mr. Hott. Glad to have you this morning.
Glad to have you, sir.
He's our Executive Director-elect, candidate-elect, or whatever you say. He signed the papers this morning. So, shall we continue, but I wanted you to be able to meet?
Would, would you give a little bit of background to the Commissioners?
I'd be happy to. There's two of you up there that I know very well. Mr. Cannon, I don't know you as well, but I have lived in North Carolina for the last thirty-five years, and I had planned on, when I retired from North Carolina, to move back here. And I wanted to be a part of the community that I grew up in. And so, when this job came available, I thought that this would be an ideal fit for me, considering the businesses that I've owned and run. My wife is going to be retiring next year, so this next year for me will be very much a transition as well. So, I'm hoping to welcome her to the community. She's a teacher, and she's a wonderful person. I'm a little biased, but I think she'll be a great fit here as well. And I'm just excited to get my hands wet and learn, and, and I don't know everything that's going on in the community. I've been trying to study...
Must not be a true hot.
I'm trying to find out what, everything that's going on in the community, but I'm looking forward to get my hands wet and learn and be an asset to the community.
Thank you.
Please, please to have you.
Yep. Thank you.
Can we now continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Want me to continue with the ask, and then...
Yeah, to be, to be honest, I will say that someone alleged that it was written twenty-six thousand dollars. I, I definitely didn't, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that amount, but I, I personally think we ought to have at least ninety days of Eileen. But whatever you ladies present, we'll maul it over here.
Well, the ask that I was going to make this morning was for twenty thousand dollars for transition. We have things set up for Mr. Hott to try to get his feet wet and to get him familiar with the people that he's, he will be working with, not only in the county, but also in the Eastern Panhandle and the state. Eileen has some, made some very good suggestions about meetings that she would like for him to attend, both informational meetings, but also ongoing things that are going on in the county right now. But also, a week-long kind of Economic Development 101 Boot Camp, and she's trying to schedule that, which would be before the end of June as well, I believe. Anyway, there are different opportunities for him to get, to know what is going on in the world of economic development. And we'd like to start right off. We've got something coming up on May the twenty-fourth, if, if you all will, will be able to grant us the money. Because I did contact the accountant for the Development Authority, and she said there was zero funds, so our budget is down to the zero mark. So, there's nothing left for this fiscal year at all, nothing. So, now I want to turn it over to Tamitha, because she's gonna give you a little tutorial, tutorial.
I'm here today just basically to give a little bit of input on my experience and my transition. I have firsthand experience of the need of the ongoing support that you need to have during your first year when you're entering into a new position and transitioning. I had previous experience where I'm currently employed, but no experience where I was promoted to as far as writing a budget and grant processing writing. Having ongoing contracting services available as these subjects and other situations arise is crucial. And the Development Authority has that opportunity with Eileen, who is willing to come back out of retirement to help John Todd at any time during that year. To keep the process ongoing and daily operations moving forward, it's nice to have someone available to call and be able to come in and help you train as issues resolve, evolve, excuse me. I'm not saying this wasn't available to me. In my situation, the person left to take another job. When that happens, it makes it very hard to bring that person back to train you. What I'm saying is, it is nice to still have that agreement and that they can be compensated because a lot of times, they're not gonna volunteer after they've left that agency. A lot of things don't come up until months down the road, and it doesn't mean that you weren't explained at the beginning of your transition, but maybe not as much detail was given into the description as what was needed at the time.
Okay, thank you, Tamitha, for that. Do we have a, a list of, or a budget of how that twenty thousand would be spent towards the different training proposals?
I've done it this time, but we can certainly come up with something.
I was gonna propose that, that if, if approved, that they accompany their expenditures, perhaps at the end of the year or fiscal year, whatever pleased the Commission, detailing the expenditures. Because it, it may not all get spent, it, it may work out perfectly, but a good point that Brian Hott made, when he was promoted to VP of, you know, it's not necessarily gonna be just the first ninety days. They wanted to leave a little extra in the allocation for end-of-year audit, or, you know, she may come in for two weeks and, and not come back in until a situational problem arises, so. But yeah, I would definitely agree that we ought to have some sort of detail on the expenditure.
Well, in my heart, I'm against this. However, saying that is, I'm not saying that I'm not maybe, maybe agree to it at some point, but we've had four directors, I think, since the inception of the Development Authority. I think he'd been there maybe for three, is that correct? Anyway, when, when Dave left, Mr. Pancake left, Mr. Campbell took over. Then Mr. Campbell passed away, and then the County Commission appointed Mr. Schumacher, and none of those people had someone to stay and guide them. And he, this, he's very capable of doing this without, without that. There's no doubt in my mind, he's very capable of doing this. And the thing I think we may run into, even the Commissioner Cannon explained quite well about the different, the different agencies, but every time we have a, we have a vacant position, then are we going to have somebody stand by or cross-train or do whatever to, to help them along? And, for example, and I know this is getting over a little bit, but take an elected official. What if, what, when you decide to give up mayor and somebody else runs, are they gonna pay you to stay on to, to help the new mayor, or the same way with the clerk? You know, it's, so it's, I just think it's, it's an area I'm not sure we want to get into. And he, he's gonna be entirely different than your former director. I, I mean, I know that because, because I know him. I know, I just feel that he can do it without, without that. However, I am not, I'm not gonna... Be real adamant about fighting this.
I, I would like to see, and I've told everybody this before, I'm a very visual person. I, I'd like to see some, some numbers on, you know, how the twenty thousand dollars will be spent, because I, I'm just a numbers guy, and that's, that's me. You know, what, what training, what part of it's to pay Eileen to train, how long, et cetera, et cetera, so...
But this, excuse me for interrupting, but what I'm aiming at is to bring him on board before June the thirtieth, before Eileen leaves. Yes, would be, it would be great if Eileen could come back, for example, at the end of a quarter or an end of a period of time when a certain reports need to go in, that kind of thing. But in order to get his feet wet with the people that she knows and with the, like I said, Eastern Panhandle Association with the state, and also hopefully get in his basic boot camp, 101, before June thirtieth.
So, you're, I'm sorry, so you're, you're, the plan was to bring him on prior to her leaving, is that what you're saying?
I mean, we've got one, one meeting set up on May the twenty-fourth, and I, I just don't think it's fair to a candidate to bring him on and say, will you, will you come this day and this day and this day and this day without any pay? I, that's...
I think understandably, these two Commissioners don't, you know, and, well, let me preface by saying, I agree with Commissioner Hott. I don't think we should do this for every director that, that comes before us. A lot of times, there's a deputy director that's been in the career with their director for years. I think this is a very specific dynamic, and without getting super long-winded, maybe you ladies could touch on the active things that are going on right now where, in my opinion, he'd be thrown to the wolves. Finalizing the, the hospital project, the Cape and Bridge telemetry, the inner workings with S.J. Morris, finalizing that contract. They have deadlines that they need to be held to. We, we need somebody that's confident and tough on these people we have contracts with. It's hard to be tough on them if you don't have all the information and you're not up to speed. I think this is a very specific dynamic. I don't think I would be wanting to do this very often, but I, I think we need to, we need to move on. What, what I'm gonna propose is that a counteroffer at fourteen thousand dollars of allocation, which is approximately ninety days, however they use over the next year, is to the Discretion Development Authority, bearing in mind that, that they will have to answer for the dollars and how they were spent. That's my motion. Ninety days of assisted training for Mr. Hott to get him up to speed on all the various, various, and, and just to, for further discussion, the Aquabank deal, we, we didn't really realize how intricate that was going to get, and, and if everything went perfectly, they, they had a right to exercise purchasing Lot Six. They're already doing that, so that's being thrown on the, the table. And if you guys want to touch on anything further...
I think you've mentioned many of the ongoing activities, but also, we've got the Railroad Spur that we're working on that grant, and it's, it would be very instrumental for John Todd to be, or Mr. Hott, excuse me, to be involved with that in the infancy rather than come on board after...
I'll, I'll second, I'll second the motion with, with up to, what, fourteen?
Fourteen thousand would be ninety days, approximately ninety days.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've, I've heard a motion and a second on the floor that we partially grant the request of the Development Authority for fourteen thousand dollars in training, and, and those things connected to that for Mr. John Todd Hott as the new Executive Director. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And if I, if I might add, you know, I, I, for the people that don't know, and, and even some of the, the other two Commissioners are probably not aware of some of it, but over the time that I've been a Commissioner, the Development Authority has had, and I'm, and I'm trying to minimize anything, but they've had to struggle with, with things that were dealt to them prior to any member being on there. And this goes back seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years, that, that we're dealing, we're still dealing with stuff that, that happened back then. And they've, they've always had to, had to fight their way to get a, to, to get where they are, and it's, it still affects us, those things that happened over the years, the Wellness Center. I mean, we fought and fought and fought for that darn Wellness Center, how much, the problems we had with that. So, I want people to know that, that the Development Authority has had to deal with things that, for the current members, it wasn't necessarily their, their, their doing or their fault. And I... And I've, I've known that, and wish, having known that, I probably haven't helped them.
Eileen had to, has had to deal the, play with the cards as she was dealt, basically.
And, and so does the members, and so do you guys. You know, you all have to deal with that, and it's, it's very unfortunate, it is, but that's, that's the way it is, and that's what, we just got to suck it up and go. So...
I certainly think it can be done in 90 days, and however that's, but, but also, just to touch on the, the hospital, you know, the, or, I'm sorry, the Wellness Center, you know, we have Valley Health playing a pretty strong hand to try to take that building from us, and you'll learn, in my opinion, let me preface, and that's something else you'll be thrown into, that, as Commissioner Hott alluded to, that, that was done long before you. So I could go on and on and on about the different things that you're going to be thrown into.
I look forward to it.
He's ready. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. 9:45, we're running about five minutes behind there, so we're doing pretty good. And Town of Romney, ARP funding request. So Mayor's coming right back up here. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Mary Shreve is the chairperson of the Romney Parks and Rec. She'll be making the presentation this morning.
All righty, go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you. Our request is for $30,000 to go towards the planning of a new pool facility. I'm sure you've all seen in the paper, Facebook, we've had some issues. We were already in, set to open, or getting ready to set to open, and know there are some maintenance issues that I think are just too far to overcome to get it open this year. And we've just realized that the pool at 60-plus years old is, it's time for a total redo. It, it, it has several issues that I don't think, you know, could be addressed to, you know, with just different things here and there. So as far as repairs to it, and I think we'd, would be beneficial to, to redo the whole center. And we have, we started a plan back wintertime, I guess, and had put in a grant, and, but with noticing that the, the issues that we had in not being able to open this summer, we want to accelerate that plan and get the planning started. So that, that's our request this morning. I do have a preliminary of what we thought that we could make this area there and have it become a full aquatic center, if you all would like to take a look at that.
Sure.
What, so the 30,000 is going to be mainly for...
Thank you.
To do a certain survey to...
To do planning.
Sort of like an engineering survey.
Correct.
This will be the same location as the previous?
Same location, yes.
Handicap accessible and...
Correct. A splash pad would also be installed, and then possibility of turning in the Old Town Hall Center into a snack shack kind of thing. We don't, at the current pool house, we don't have that, and, but to be able to actually serve food, and then it would also stand as a place for kids to get in and out of the weather if, you know, the weather turns up bad. And as a possibility, it could also be used, you know, even in the winter, in the winter months, you know, as a place for parties or things like that.
But when you do this, you're going to make sure that no water comes out of the pool and goes down in the community.
That will be part of the plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request of the Romney Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve the $30,000 request from Town of Romney for the plan for the pool renovation, for the town pool renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And make sure we know that comes out of ARP funding.
And Commissioner Hott has designated that, he wanted to know that that came out of ARP funding. So all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good luck, ladies.
We did, we did apply. We've already got our application in with Aaron.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. This will be a start.
Thank you.
Clerk, we have a couple of minutes. Do we have any maintenance items? We could hit there before 10?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the exonerations as presented by the tax assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the exonerations presented by the assessor since our last meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
The lady sent us a standing request, well, actually, it's a signed copy, or contract by Adam Carlin, providing accounting services for the Health Department project. You guys had been introducing the proposal some time back and agreed to report with it. So Adam has signed the contract, and we need to approve it here if you want to use him as the accounting service for the CDBG grant.
And we seriously done this, correct?
Well, you had to sign...
We had, we had to sign.
You guys agreed to it.
Okay.
There's a lot of redundancy with this CDBG grant's name. Keep coming back.
I move we authorize the President to fix his signature and final approval on the contract with Adam Carlin, CPA.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to finalize the contract with Mr. Carlin for the accounting and, and services required with the Health Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I also have two requests for reimbursement on the CDBG grants. This is, this is the Health Department also. One is the amount of $9,500, the other is $94.5140. A lot of signatures here in the next two minutes, so we have those two requests for Also have a right of way, that was right of way request that's sent from the Public Services District regarding right of way accounting.
Yeah, this is a right of way request for the Town of Camp Walker. We, when Central Hampshire agreed to do the Slingsville Water Project, they needed some more people to sign, so they went down, down Little Cape and up, I think, up Allen Hill Road some to get some, some more customers. So this, this is just a right of way that, we own Camp Walker, so we want to give them a right of way to go past Camp Walker. So that's what this is for. And having said that, I move that we authorize the President to sign that, that right of way agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the President signed the right of way agreement with Central Hampshire for the proposed, mentioned by Commissioner Hott, just, just previously mentioned by Commissioner Hott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will make the correction, this is, will be signed by all three commissioners.
I'm sorry.
But that's at least what the paperwork says here. Mr. Stuck?
I move we authorize the President to sign the CDBG expenditures as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's also, motion on the floor to sign the current CBDG project expenditures, documents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, yeah, that'll take a couple of minutes to get those. Just don't let me forget. Okay, so it's 10 o'clock, or a couple of minutes after, we will move on to Cape and Bridge in reference to ARP requests, Tech Park Utility Transition.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Bringing another friendly and supportive face up here to help me out. It was actually my goal out of this to have a project to work with Eileen before she stepped out, and I'm, I'm getting my wish right now. So to introduce this request to you gentlemen, I'm just going to give a little bit of backstory about the Tech Park Utility System. As you all are probably more familiar than I am, the Tech Park started in 2000, went online between 2004 and 2006. It was initially the desire of the Development Authority to transition that utility system over to the Town of Cape and Bridge when the Tech Park was in development. It's also very common knowledge that Cape and Bridge is small, it's poor, we've got a two-man staff that does all of our water sewer and maintenance. So the, at that time, 15 years ago, the thought from the Town of Cape and Bridge was that the taking ownership of the Tech Park utilities would be a little bit too much of a strain on the resources that were available to Cape and Bridge. So that kind of left us in a lull for the last 15 years. I think that for a long time, the goal was to move forward with the utility transition from the Development Authority over to Central Hampshire, but given that Central Hampshire doesn't operate in Cape and Bridge, they're in Augusta, it would have been a strain on their resources and manpower as well to operate the utility system. So as the Tech Park is starting to get more clients and is having the requirement of actually bringing the utilities online as a public utility, Eileen reached out to request that the town look at it another time to see whether or not this was feasible. The town agreed to look at it with a new set of eyes, and the request that's before you is essentially an outline of what it would take to help the town accept ownership of this utility, bring it into operation, and offset some of the costs that the town's going to incur during the first year while more customers come into the Tech Park and actually start to help the utility system pay for itself. I am happy, I'm assuming that you gentlemen haven't had a chance to read over it, I'm happy to go through it line by line. I think that it's of particular note that the largest expense in here is for the installation of a bulk water site. So I believe that the Development Authority previously brought an application to you gentlemen a year or two ago for a bulk water site right there in the Tech Park. They've got the water, they've got the access to Route 50, there's a demand for water, bulk water on that end of the county. There's a lot of unserved customers that live up on those ridges. And I believe that the word was that you gentlemen thought it was a good idea, but because the Development Authority was not a utility, they couldn't actually own and operate the bulk water station at the time. So when I, when the town started working on this request, we borrowed the Development Authority's good idea, and we believe that it will help not only serve a community need, but help to offset those costs of operating the utility for the first couple of years while new customers are coming in and getting hooked up and actually purchasing water. If you all have any in particular questions, I'm happy to kind of talk through it. I did want to also reiterate that the request that's before you is not a conservative request. So what we tried to do here was capture, and I apologize for the timing on this, we've been trying to work and push this through kind of quickly in dealing with a couple of other matters and getting this, this deal to move through. What we tried to do was capture the potential cost and then bring this request to you with the knowledge that we will do absolutely everything in our power to bring the, the actual expended cost down below this, and I fully anticipate that we're going to be able to. Namely, the telemetry system components. I know that you gentlemen actually just, or the County Commission, helped fund an updated telemetry system for the utility, probably in the last few years. The issue is that the town doesn't use the same telemetry system, so this is the worst-case scenario cost of bringing in the telemetry into the town's current system. We're going to do everything we can to either bring a monitor over or see if there's a software requirement, or even hardware modifications that are going to knock this cost down. But that $26,000, I was going to request that you actually approve it in the event that we weren't able to find anything else that was going to help match the telemetry up with what the town uses. We know that we're going to save some money on the sewer hookup, and we hope that we're going to be able to save some money on Lines 3 and 6 as well. I am also very hopeful that we'll be able to save some money on Line 1. But I didn't want to come back to you all for supplemental requests. I'd rather report that, hey, we've actually saved money and here's your money unused and hand it back to you. The good news in the implementation of this project is we've done a lot of the legwork in getting this project ready to move forward. The request is for 365 days. However, I do anticipate that we're going to be able to wrap up all of the repairs and requirements that there's to request within six months, and we're going to do everything we can to get that, to make that happen. I am familiar with the ARPA reporting requirements. I've worked with Aaron, I'd be happy to work with whoever follows in Aaron's shoes, but as far as administrative load, I can handle the reporting requirements, I'll be managing this matter for the town. So I'm hopefully going to be able to make the county's end of it streamlined and easy to go. I've probably talked too much about this, do you all have any questions?
I, yeah, I do, I have, you know, you and I had talked about this previously, prior to, prior to the town even voting, and, and I indicated to you that, that I, for one, as one commissioner, also indicated that I was the only one, would be very supportive of a bulk water station. And the thing that's not in here, and these, these other things do trouble me, the bulk water station is fine, but the other thing that you and I talked about, and there was only two things, was that over the years, there, there have been people that lives close to the water tank up there, and they've been unable to get water, and they couldn't get water on account of the, the Development Authority couldn't, couldn't sell them. So I indicated to you that, that I thought it would be maybe a good idea to, to apply through, if we had any ARP funding left, to see if we could help do that. I don't know how many people live up there, Lynn, Lynn, he, he may know more than, well, I'm sure he knows more than I do about it, but I do notice that some people up there, they're close to the tank that would like to have water, and that's, that's the two things that I think you and I talked about. Now, we didn't talk anything about the sewer. I, I don't even, I don't know what the, the site acquisition is, the 50,000, you buying that from the...
in site development that we would otherwise have to put in if we wanted to build this on an undeveloped site in the middle of a field.
Well, to me, the bulk water station would be very simple. I mean, you, at Central Hampshire, all they have is a two-inch bulk water line, and the people that they sell to, the, uh, the guys that haul water for pools and so forth, uh, they just pull in and hook up to the two-inch line and fill their trucks, and they have a meter there. Now, I know that what the town Romney was gonna do was gonna, I think they was gonna have a, a machine with, that could be credit cards and so forth, understand that, but my lands, you, you don't need very much space for that. Now, the, the, the thing that, that bothers me is that the Development Authority, it, it's working out the way, eventually, the way we wanted to work out with, with this, and it's, it's very pleasing to me that, that the town of Cape and Bridge is doing this. But the, the Development Authority, as far as I'm concerned, could, could either give you that piece of property, or have you set the bulk water station closer to Smokey Hollow Road, closer to where the line is, and it'd be a very simple thing to put, put, put one in there. Um, well, that, that's, that's how I feel about that, the fifty and, and the rest of this. I don't understand the, the septic, uh, these things should've been taken care of with, with, with the project that, that was just supposedly completed. All these sewer line spot, high-spot repairs, oh, that's, it should've been already done. And if it's not done, then somebody should be responsible for that, other than the County Commission or you guys, you know, so that's, I don't have a problem at all with the bulk water station, because I, I indicated to you that I would support that, and I will support that. The other stuff, this Commissioner, I just, I couldn't support.
And I'm, I'm happy to go through, uh, your comments one by one, sir, and address them individually. You and I did speak, and I've taken your request to heart. The town of Cape and Bridge, because we weren't able to contract and actually get an accurate cost as to what that survey up on top of the mountains is gonna look like, what we're planning to do is roll that into a follow-on survey for additional hookups, that'll happen after this, after the system goes online. Uh, we don't necessarily plan to make an ARPA request under that, uh, but we've got good contacts with Thrasher Engineering, and we'll fold that into a larger water development project. But I, without being able to capture accurate cost, I didn't wanna bring that to you as a Commissioner and say, hey, do this, but I don't know how much it costs yet. Uh, admittedly, we have been working under a compressed timeline here, this is all happening in, uh, with the reality that Aquabank, uh, a large employer is moving in, they're ready to set up, and we're trying to bring this system online. I think that that timeline does feed into some of the other concerns that we might have. There are not a lot of extensive issues that we've gotta repair over here on this system, uh, but there are some. Uh, the, and I'll just go through them one by one, so the system's about fifteen years old, uh, the, it was spotted and scoped and inspected by the Development Authority prior to the town, uh, taking ownership of it. This is the redress to some of those concerns, uh, and they, uh, I'm a pragmatist, if, if we kick this back to the Development Authority and say, hey, it's your mess to clean up, somebody's still gotta do it, and there's still the county, I mean, it's still the County Development Authority. Uh, this is a way for the town to take ownership, get this project moving forward, and use funding that was, uh, statutorily provided specifically for this before they opened the funding way up. Uh, the sewer line high-spot repair, again, this is a high number, so essentially there's one belly that has dead water in it, uh, it can happen for a number of reasons, uh, but we are thinking that it could be a, a source of infiltration, so we just wanna get it cleaned up, get it straightened out, and then get that removed. Uh, like I said, I do think that we're gonna be able to do it for less. The septic discontinuation and sewer hookup, so there is a customer in the park right now that's currently on a septic system, so they're not connected in, uh, to require the customer to do that isn't necessarily feasible, so this would be the cost to have the towns or the utility system hooked up and then discontinue their septic. I do think we're gonna be able to make substantial savings there as well. Uh, lids, risers, and hydrant repair, this is just the, the cost of the system being fifteen, sixteen years old. Uh, again, largely, the system's in good shape, but there are some things that we just need to repair to get it buffed up and ready to go as we start bringing new customers in. Uh, lids and risers, there's just a few low spots where there's either cracked lids, missing lids, a- and the risers that would push the, the lid up above the groundwater level to prevent infiltration, uh, and there's a couple hydrants, and if we can repair the hydrants instead of replace them, we're absolutely gonna do that as well. Uh, we've tried, uh, we've tried to cut it down, but this is the, the cost that, like I said, we're, I'd hope that you can see this as a not-to-exceed and move forward with the knowledge that we will do everything we can to carefully shepherd, uh, public funds and kick the, kick the remaining funds back over to the town, and to specifically address your concern for the citizens that live up on the top of the mountain, that is part of the plan as well, I just, I didn't have the information available to put that into this request.
And I do know that, that Cape and Bridge has always, when we have granted them grants or funding, they've always been very, uh, responsible about, and, and matter of fact, they've turned money back to us before, more than once, and, and I, as a Commissioner, appreciate that. Uh, but I'm, I'm fine with the bulk water, uh, and, and I'd like for them maybe to look at, at, at another site for the bulk water instead of, instead of that old package plant, but, uh, that's, that's my opinion, guys. I would, I would, like I said, I would support doing the bulk water, and, um, we have until the end of twenty-four to allocate funds if we have any left in our ARP, and we have until twenty-twenty-six to complete that project. So I, I would like for them to, for us to maybe go ahead and agree to the bulk water and, and let them come back with, with some figures on the, on, on the other project that's, that's up on Bear, where the tank is on Bear Garden.
The, the big concern for me was the fact that we, just last year, we already paid the, the twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars for the telemetry. Could you, you touched on it, but could you elaborate on why would we be paying twice for the same thing?
This, this is just the goal, to get a proposition in front of you guys, uh, in one big package, instead of trying to come back and hit you up with several requirements.
I gotcha.
Uh, our first calls into our telemetry folks say, hey, this is how much it costs to bring it online. I've been talking, uh, working with Eileen, uh, we're gonna do everything we can to see there's potential for hardware solutions, i.e. moving our monitor from one location over to another, there's potential hardware modifications to adapt it from their system over to ours, and then theoretically, there's software modifications. However, we've put this application together, uh, pretty quickly in order to try to make sure that the request can come before you, you all can see what this cost would look like, uh, and, uh, and that's just kinda where we're at. I, 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 I'm hoping, and I'm confident that we're, this isn't the number, but, uh, you know, we're, I, I'd want you to be, I'd want you to approve it if, if, as a worst-case scenario as to what it could cost to bring the telemetry into the system that the town uses.
And, and I share Commissioner Hott's concerns on the, the things that, you know, in my opinion as well, were already paid for, uh, and, and I don't, uh, we, we talked about that, but it just seems to me that Thrasher and, and these contractors are very, very good at, uh, explaining their way out of, uh, holding their end of the bargain, and Eileen, I don't know if you could elaborate on that, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't want to, uh, condemn Patricia or anything, but basically, I give Eileen a lot of credit, she took it upon herself, say, we're, you know, they kinda gave us their explanation of why they weren't doing what they were supposed, or completed their, why we're dealing with these issues and what they're gonna do to stand behind it, and they actually gave us a price of, what was it, eighteen thousand dollars or something?
Close to twenty-nine.
So Eileen put her boots on the ground, and the mayor gracefully, uh, uh, we worked out a deal where we, we got these things fixed for about a thousand bucks compared to eighteen thousand, but, uh, why was it that Thrasher didn't warranty or, or stand behind this situation? Why was it that we were having to pay the thousand?
Just to address that, and, and you're talking about what was identified as INI and potential INI in the system. Um, the sites of that INI were not in the defined project scope of the sewer improvement project, so therefore, that, the recent project that was completed that, that you all provided, um, income to, we did as well, and, um, it belonged to the town of Cape and Bridge, those sites where, where INI was suspect were, um, not in that scope, as also was the sewer line connection from Direct Dancer up on the hill, that wasn't in the project scope, so therefore, it couldn't be added to the project that was recently completed. It was always going to be an additional expense to reconnect them to the line, and then to identify when, when it was suspect that there was INI in the system, we needed to verify that it wasn't, or what the degree of significance was, and the cost it would be to resolve that, and that was when we were negotiating with Central Hampshire, as you know. So we, uh, the Development Authority took that on, on, right away, the engineer, familiar with it, and the fact that we were against a timeline because of the property sale, um, the Development Authority has a continuing, uh, engineering service agreement with Thrasher to wear for infrastructure projects within the Tech Park. So that helps us expedite and bypass some of the, um, timeline to be able to, uh, plan a project, fund a project, and complete a project. Um, so we asked them for a proposal, what they proposed, as you, uh, may have heard, I know Commissioner Cannon was aware of it, they came in with over twenty thousand dollars, much of which were things that they did with us prior to even starting the sewer project. So that's the reason that we were able to say, wait a minute, we're gonna involve the public sector, you know, for what we need to find out, it's a simple matter of potentially cam- flushing lines, cambering lines, um, these are things that any active utility could do, and I did speak with Central Hampshire about it, they did not have the ability to do it, but they worked with, just in time, Gary Mullins Group, so I contacted him. So in partnership with Gary and with the town of, of Romney, we were able to find that and complete this study and determine that the system is in really good shape. What Luggan is mentioning is that there is one line that had a little bit of a belly and a little bit of water in it, um, and that could simply be due to the fact that the system has been dormant since two thousand six, literally, it's not been active, and that just in operation could flush that through, so that was one thing, and then the other thing was, there was some water seeping into the system, and that is because the manholes that were placed when the park was built were kinda surface-level, so as we had a torrential rain and water ponded, some seepage could come in, so simply changing the lids, putting a riser if necessary, which are typical operating, um, expenses to any utility system. So that's, I think, why, um, that, uh, the town is, is listing that amount, our funding in those areas in the event that they would have to take care of that sooner than later. Now, I applaud the fact that you understand that the bulk water system is gonna bring great benefit, as you all know, uh, environmental as well, they won't have to wastewater every five days, plus, once they can bring that online, it's gonna generate income for them to be able to address these other things, so.
I think the long and short of it is maybe not necessarily to, to my liking or the board's, we did sorta hold their feet to the fire and investigated why they weren't fixing these things for free, and that, that was the, that's the explanation.
I've, I've been aware of that, I just.
I appreciate y'all doing that. I, one question I have is the, the second biggest expenditure item on the, on the chart there, and that's the fifty thousand dollars. And, um, as a Commissioner, I try to look at things like a citizen does, and, um, the, the, the project itself, as you noted, uh, there, it, at the beginning, you know, it, it's, it's been in limbo for fifteen years and, and nobody wants it, um, you know, we had to come up with a, with a, with an idea and grant money to get, get it to move, and it's hard for me to justify as a Commissioner that the land acquisition there would be worth fifty thousand dollars, so, you know, a- and, and there may be details with the, with the Development Authority that they're, that they're committed to a certain amount there, uh, through prior grants, but, um, you know, as a Commissioner, i- it's hard for me to sell to my citizens that all of a sudden we have a piece of property here that's worth fifty thousand dollars, but for fifteen years, nobody's wanted it. So I, that's the way I look at things, and, and I, I like to be able to tell my people, you know, this is why we had to make this happen, so if, you know, bef- before I could vote on it, I kinda, I'd like a clear answer to that question a- and some possible tweaking to the, to the proposal itself, as the other Commissioners have noted, but I am in full support of the project as something that needs to move forward. Um, there's a few little questions I think we all three have about exactly how to do it.
The, the biggest thing, since we're talking about the bulk water Commissioners, is we're going to approve, uh, we all three agree, let me mention that the bulk water site, or the bulk water apparatus ought to be approved, but now we're talking about approving a bulk water apparatus with nowhere to put it. You know what I'm saying? If they, if they don't have a site and we're not allowing them to buy a site, we're approving them for something they have nowhere to put. That was, that was my big concern.
I think it's very simple, it can go right along, the main line goes right along Smokey Hollow Road, correct?
Yes.
So a, a bulk water site could be set there anywhere, I mean, they have a right-of-way for the, for the line, it don't have to be, my lands, Mayor, how big was your site that you're gonna use down there? And you, you're having some problems with it, I think, over the land acquisition maybe or something?
No.
Okay.
Um, so the, the site has changed, and I'm guessing that it's, relative to the spot here, I'd say an acre, I, I'm, I'm, uh...
It wouldn't even be, need, need to be as big as half of this room, correct?
Well, it has to be big enough for a large vehicle pulling in.
The truck to get to, yes, yeah. And the, Central Hampshire does the same thing, they pull right in there and they hook up and they read the meter and check it off and go, it's, it's not, I don't think it's that complicated. The most expensive thing is gonna be the machine that you're gonna have to have for the, for the credit cards and so forth, in, in my opinion. I, and, and I'll, I'll, uh, a- as I said before, and as I told you, I'm, I'm supportive of the bulk water, I am, I, and I just, uh, I think it can be done without putting it out there where the, where the, where the package plant was.
May I speak to, or ans- just, and this may address some of your, your concerns and answer some of your questions, and in regards to that, um, bike, bulk water site acquisition and the fifty thousand dollars, um, you made, um, some comments as to why that's been there and it's, it's never been approached or never been brought up before now. Um, the fact of the matter is, it couldn't be, because when the park was defined, when the park was built, any place where there were utilities located, Bear Garden Mountain, Hummingbird Lane, Smokey Hollow Road, those are not factored into the bond debt of the park. So in other words, they were ne- they were always intended to be owned by the authority or owned by the property owner to, to house the utilities, um, that would, would, would always be on site. So in transferring that, the assets to, um, uh, to, uh, to anyone, to, to the town of Cape and Bridge, we're, we're maintaining the debt on it too. Um, the reason that, that for the fifty thousand dollars encompasses all the property that, and, uh, and the structures where, that will go to the acquiring utility, the, um, where the package plant was, nothing could happen, we couldn't do anything prior until this year recently because of the sewer project, because even though the plant was dormant, in order to maintain the capacity for the sewer system that we could transfer to the town of Cape and Bridge, that twenty-five thousand gallons, we had to maintain that permit. We could not even look at doing anything with the property until after that project was completed and the package plant was removed and decommissioned, that has since happened. Um, now, the authority, in, in checking with the Department of Economic Development, any of those properties that house utilities for the Development Authority are, are ownership. We can transfer the assets, we can sell the property, so when you start looking about the acreage that is at Smokey Hollow, at Bear Garden Mountain and Hummingbird Lane, and you put what would be a fair market value for a property bordering, um, either Route fifty or Smokey Hollow, it's significantly more than, than fifty thousand. Um, if, the board has had some discussion that when this project was finished, what would we do with that, we, you know, it's not our bond debt, we would probably put that property up for sale, which would also include the building that, that's in there, the fence-lined area that, and that, right, right now, the building serves a different function for the county.
Let, let me put you on the spot, Eileen.
Absolutely.
What would, what would the dollar amount be, and you may not know it today, to break the development of...
bordering either Route 50 or Smokey Hollow, it's significantly more than 50,000. The board has had some discussion that when this project was finished, what would we do with that? You know, it's not our bond debt. We would probably put that property up for sale, which would also include the building that's in there, the fence-lined area that, and that, right now, the building serves a different function for the county.
Let me put you on the spot, Eileen.
Absolutely.
What would the dollar amount be, and you may not know it today, to break the Development Authority even? Because in my opinion, that is what economic development is for. We're not trying to make tons of money, but we do want to stimulate growth and at least break even and have our expenditures paid for. That would be a number I would be interested in, at the least. And the other thing, gentlemen, and believe me, this isn't me speaking, but I'm just thinking objectively, we approved the bulk water, the Economic Development Authority Board, which do serve at our pleasure, we all know, don't necessarily have to give the land.
No, we don't. That's my point.
So I'm not trying, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, let's be very, very clear, if we're playing hardball, if it comes to that, which that's not what I want, but I'm just thinking, let's bear that in mind, you know. Commissioners don't agree necessarily that it ought to go there, but we approve the bulk water, and then they decide not to grant the land. That's also a situation. So I would be interested, as one commissioner, in what it would take monetarily to break the Development Authority even on that piece of ground.
Yeah.
As a concession.
And I'm not sure quite that I understand your question. You're saying, what's the fair market value?
So over time, if the Development Authority itself, through its devices and monetary funding, has put $23,000 into that lot, that's what I would be interested in, at the least. Personally, I'm fine with the 50,000, but I'm just, we're mauling this over, and we have to come to an agreement, and this is sort of a concession to the full commission as a proposal. For me, it's a lateral fund, you know. If we give 50,000, it's just a lateral fund. It's, you guys are going to have to pay for a lot if we don't give you the 50. And then if, let's just say the Development Authority does make a profit, in my opinion, that's a good thing, because it can be used for further projects.
Right. And I'm glad you said that, because if any money, anything that we sell, any money or profit we make on the sale of property that's not controlled by bond debt allows it to be put into the operating account of the Cape and Bridge Building Fund. So that's the difference, literally. Any property, the Aqua Bank sale, the Lot 6 sale that's pending, the S.J. Moore sale, every single bit of that had to be applied toward the debt. So even though there's development things happening and we're selling property, that's only reducing our debt line. And the goal, obviously, is to sell the property at a higher than our bond debt requirement so that we satisfy that debt sooner. But any property that, or anything that we do tied to the utility sites would be, would go into the operating account for the Cape and Bridge Building Fund.
And the only other caveat that I just wanted to tack on is another incentive for this site is that the previous development for Hampshire County broadband utilities that are located on that site can now be shepherded by another municipality, another local government in the county, rather than the complications that would arise if this lot was sold to a private individual later on down the road. So now, the county's investment on that site already can be protected going forward, and we've already negotiated with the Development Authority attorneys on how we're going to structure that.
Okay, gentlemen, we're going to, we've got to move on, sake of time, and I appreciate both of you all for the presentation. Do we choose to move on what's presented, or would we like for some tweaking on what's been presented? I feel I can speak for the three of us that we are 100% in support of the project itself, being that it took us 30 minutes of discussion. There is some questions.
I'd like to see if they could find another site for the bulk water station without.
The other thing that I'm bearing in mind, gentlemen, is, and I'm not sure if you've tracked, but the, our United States Congress has proposed legislation that would include budget and a facade that would take back all of the unspent.
I'm aware of that. I'm very well aware of that.
So we have time on our hands.
I want to, I want to get this money allocated.
Okay.
But just because that bill was defeated, SB 5, whatever it was, it was defeated. And I'm sure it'll probably come back.
Yeah.
And I'm aware of it. But I'm not going to be intimidated by that either.
Do you think two weeks would be, I'm not intimidated by anything.
Anything will be, anything will be good with me. If they can come back and give us something other than where they're trying to put the bulk water station now, because I think it can be very simple, David.
Okay.
I really do.
My biggest question is, two weeks enough time at our next meeting to maul these over?
And Logan, could you, could you go ahead, and while you're doing this, go ahead and look at the Bear Garden where you and I talked about? Because those, the only thing you and I talked about was water. Sewer wasn't even involved in that at all. And I know exactly, and I'm not, I understand why you're doing this, and that's okay. I mean, I wouldn't probably be doing the same thing. But I just don't, I just don't like the way that it's presented there with the sewer and so forth, and the acquisition of the $50,000 to the Development Authority. I just, I just, dang on, you know, they agreed to take this thing. Now, we're trying to complicate it. And the thing that bothers me is you're putting all this on us. This complication is now on the three commissioners, which it should have never been. And so that's where I'm at with this.
Can I just make one comment, and I know you guys are on a schedule, and we're going to get out of here, and that is, as far as, and I agree 100% with you since I stepped into that office, not in this position, but as a board member years ago, is that the folks up on Bear Garden Mountain need access to water, and the system is that far apart, the length of this room, and needs to be connected. However, until the assets officially transfer to a utility, the Development Authority would be the one having to develop a project, and do we want to do this at this stage?
I know that, I know all that, Eileen. I know that. I'm very well aware of that.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner? Are we going to table?
I just, I think they understand what we'd like to do. I mean, you guys can differ with me, I mean, I'm not.
I'd like to see Logan work with the, work with the three of us over the next two weeks and present again in two weeks, if we could do that.
I'd make a motion that we reconvene in two weeks on this matter.
Unfortunately, we're working against the requirement that the Development Authority is a public entity, the town of Cape and Bridge is a public entity.
Let me ask you this, has the PSC approved this yet?
PSC, we've been in touch with the PSC, and they've greenlit the requirements that we need up until this point. There's a couple other things that we had to finalize to get this deal to move forward, namely, an interaction with the town of Cape and Bridge and the DNR, which is, we've made a great headway in that last week, and which has brought us here. And then we'll do a final resolution with Hampshire County CHPSD. So we'll resolve those couple matters, and then we'll have everything we need to go to close. Like I said, the primary issue with trying to push things forward in two weeks is that all the notice, or public notice and requirement, we're dealing with, we're dealing with different candidates. If we can identify the main stress points that we're hitting, which it sounds like is the price for the lot, when we developed this project, we could not find a location that was better than the old package plant. But if we can get you all, maybe even an appraisal of the lot, would that satisfy some of the concerns that the commission has?
Well, my only concern is, Logan, that's a theory, but, and I guess, how do I, I try to put it as simple and as straightforward as I can. If we advertised that lot for $50,000 and for the uses that it's, what's going to happen with it, nobody would buy it, is my point. You know, and a lot of that land stood down there for years, and nobody's bought it. And again, I got to point out that, you know, Eileen's tackled a major hurdle with that down there. But this is what I hear as your representative, when I go to the fair, when I go to ball games, when I go, you know, a question I might get as a commissioner is, why'd you pay $50,000 for a lot that's set there for 15 years and wouldn't sell? So I just, as, I try to be a solid commissioner, I want to be able to tell my people that. You know, why do we have to do this?
So perhaps instead of, maybe back to Commissioner Cannon's request earlier, that we calculate the actual cost that the Development Authority has incurred in lot development for that site, and then bring that forward back to you, gentlemen. Like I said, this, the lot, based on geography, based on layout, based on access, is, it's the site that is preferable for this location. It's actually the perfect size, too, and it's a natural carve-out of one acre, which is the desired lot size. But if, is there anything that we can do, would that be a more accurate request if we brought back to you all, hey, this is it, tabulated exactly what the Development Authority has put into this site, site development, in order to?
That's what I was proposing as a concession. For me, it's lateral funding. I don't see ourselves as distant from the county Economic Development Authority as maybe some other commissioners, but I do understand the concern, and perhaps in a lot of opinions, I will say, you know, 25,000 an acre or 50,000 an acre is high by a lot of people's opinions, and low by a lot of people's opinions. But that was my proposal. It's pretty clear that there's not a majority that agrees with the 50,000 as presented, so we need a concession.
We had, we had a motion, he made a motion, I'll second it. Let's, I'll have a question. Let's get this over with and.
Yes.
Motion, a second.
Okay. All those in favor of the, asking the presentation for some revision, hopefully in two weeks, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Logan, if you recall in our conversation, one of the main things I stressed is, I didn't want the town of Cape and Bridge to take over the system and not be able to sustain herself. So that was, that was what I was trying to do, and so.
Very much appreciated, Commissioner. I'll also try to revisit the other issue that you brought up, and if I can get the data to bring that forward into the follow-on application, I will as well.
Thank you, Logan. Okay. Next, we have the Hampshire County Convention and Visitors Bureau in reference to CVB-led county trail funding request. I believe that would be Tina and Peggy.
Hi.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you for giving us time on your agenda this morning. Still doesn't.
I have to get a sandwich here.
A few months ago, in the CVB meeting, we approved a motion to have our executive director pursue the idea of developing trails in the county. It's been on our minds for a while. We have people who come in to the visitor's center, I've seen this in Cape and Bridge, asking where the trails are. And we're limited in what we can direct them in terms of official trails. So this idea has come up a couple of times. And what I propose to you today would be funding for a plan that is composed of four components. Three small trails would be, we would get a plan for a contract with a firm, we would get a plan, an engineering plan for three small trails, and a fourth plan for, excuse me, a fourth plan for a strategic plan to involve the entire county in a regional, looking at the full county, to develop a regional idea for a regional plan and look at the feasibility of doing that. The reason we want to start with three small trails is that we want to get an idea, get, first off, get visitors and residents used to using trails like this. This would be a nice trail, these would be nice trails for them, and get them used to coming and using them, and give us an opportunity to gauge the community interest in that. That would help us in pursuing it further. If we bundle these plans into one contract, we save a considerable amount of money than if we were to look at one trail and have that, a plan for that trail, and a separate trail. So the funding that we're requesting today is bundled for that reason. I'm going to give you just a few points, and then see if Tina or Logan has anything they want to add to that. This is similar to a plan developed in Preston County. And what we would be seeing is, what we envision is, throughout, in the county, there would be three sites. We have letters of support from three groups that would house those trails. One is Fort Edwards, the other would be Parks and Rec, and the other is the town of Romney. So there would be three trails of about a mile in length built in those areas. And we would be paying for the plans, the engineering plans for that. CVB would administer this contract, and our executive director would then follow up after that with obtaining funding for actually implementing the plans. So what I'd like to do is to see, in thinking about where these might be, this is still somewhat, well, we haven't signed anything. We are looking, we're looking at plans now. And in talking with the town of Romney, my understanding is that we might be looking at a mile-long trail at the depot. Is that correct? And with Fort Edwards, we'd be looking at a mile-long trail on Fort Edwards' property. Parks and Rec has in mind Camp Walker for a one-mile trail. We are talking with a company called Downstream Strategies, and they have done this kind of plan in other places. So as we look at the county, what we would like to see in years to come is that people could come into our county, use our trails, and access other counties. But that would be along the way. That's a possibility in years to come. Right now, we'd be looking at having trails that would attract residents as well as visitors. This goes along with our mission of tourism. Currently, we would have somebody who might come to ride the train, and then they say, what else is there to do? Well, they would have a trail there, close by, and there would be two other trails in the county that we, that could be possibilities for them. Tina, can you have something you'd like to add to that, by any chance?
I would just, I would add that, also from an economic standpoint, and there's a page in here, you know, we're getting three new schools, brand-new schools in the county. Broadband is, you know, spreading throughout the county. Now, if we would get trails on top of that, that's going to add to community growth. We're going to have more tourism, but it's also going to encourage folks to move in who are looking for a place to raise their families. That's going to have a ripple effect. That in turn, you know, encourages folks to move in who maybe have higher income, they have more disposable income, which is going to lead to increased economic growth and development in the area. It's going to, the higher-income residents will increase to the tax base. The trails themselves will increase property value as well. And also, again, you know, new tourism coming in, the individuals have the means to support local businesses and attractions, and, you know, it seems like there are a lot of new businesses starting in Hampshire County right now for the community, but also that are tourism-led. Of course, our farm crawl is coming up again, you know, we're focused on agritourism. We just had our successful outdoor show, so I think that, again, for us moving forward for the CVB, we're interested in promoting what's here, keeping what we have, keeping things sustainable, and focusing on what we all love here, but doing it in such a way that it increases revenue for the county as well. So that's, do you all have any questions?
Yeah. What, do you know how many trails we have in the county now?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how many trails we have in the county?
So we have the three that Peg mentioned. There are also trails on private, private land that could also be used. You're not limited just by public or or private lands. For instance, I know that Peterkin, they have trails. Who else has trails?
I don't know.
We have...
It's one of those things, as you, as I'm investigating and going around and talking to people, you find out more...
We have, we have trails on on both of the of the hunting ranges, Short Mountain and Nathaniel.
I'm telling you that though, that the hunting, the W M As are kind of off-limits to trails, to recreational trails, simply because, I guess, the use for hunting and for wildlife. I haven't, I haven't delved into that too deeply. Like I said, we just did our first outdoor show, and D N R was very, very helpful. So we're building that relationship, but I I just kind of found out, like, no, W M As and what we're trying to do isn't generally done. And I've learned that from other counties, and honestly, not because I talk to anyone here, but other counties have said W M As are usually reserved for, like, the use of hunting and just for the wildlife in general. I know that I got a call the other day, someone wanted to hunt mushrooms, and they had already called down to D N R. They were like, no, you can't, you can't even hunt mushrooms on W M A land, you're not supposed to, so...
I know there's walking trails on the mountain. I mean, you can, you can get off, you can get off Fort Hill Road and go up.
I mean...
But the one in Fort Ed, there is one in Fort Edwards now, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
There's a trail in Fort Edwards now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And Ice Mountain has a trail?
They have trails now, they, they...
It's private.
Yes, it's private, and you have to arrange to have a tour.
Okay. I think there's one in Yellow Springs somewhere, there's one over to us.
There is one that goes through on the edge of Cape and Springs, and that is open to the public. It's a very small part, and I, and I will add to this, and this isn't here, but also, we've been contacted by by Berkeley County over the last couple of months, and we're looking to form a trail coalition, which just means simply that we're open to working together with Hampshire, Morgan, Berkeley, and Jefferson, mainly to focus on our running parallel to the C and O. So that would be called something like the Potomac Trail Alliance, but trails are big money. There are a lot of other counties in West Virginia that are, that are showing, you know, a lot of revenue coming in from trails, and, again, a lot of people are driving right through Hampshire County to get, to get to those trails. But like Peg said, it, it adds that extra reason for someone to stay overnight here, to get some heads in beds, to increase our lodging tax, but it will also benefit the the community as well, and it should, it should...
Is this coalition modeled based on the Hatfield-McCoy idea?
So the Hatfield and McCoy, I have information, and and also, I can email these to you, they are impact studies, and if I email this to you, you guys will be able to click on this information, look at it. So Hatfield-McCoy, of course, brings in a lot, a lot of money.
It does.
But we, I don't think that our vision is to have motorized vehicles. Our vision is more like what Pocahontas is doing, which is mountain bike trails, hiking trails, and that's the thing, there are so many different options, and with these smaller trails, trails can be tailored to to younger children, to elementary school children. They have what's called, like, a pump track, which just imagine a, a fun little thing, and and they have it for adults, too, but they have, like, toddler pump tracks, they have them for elementary school ages, where it's just something, they'll, you know, add in the little twisty-turny things, some different, different things that the kids could ride a bike or walk across.
The trails you're talking about, is it going to be walking trails or...
Walking trail, possibly biking trails, but but to start off with here, it would be walking trails.
Where did, how did you come up with the sixty thousand? I don't, what, what?
That was my next question, Tina, is, is can you give us a six, more in-depth and detailed, what are, what are we proposing to get for sixty thousand dollars here? What are we going to have after sixty thousand dollars is spent?
So my, my short story is going to be that we would have the engineering plans, and you have to have the engineering plans before you can move forward, applying for really any of the larger grants or don't, you have to have the plan in place, just, you know what I mean? Like, you're not going to be able to get funding if we can't show, like, this is what we're doing with the funds. But I would defer maybe to, Logan knows more about this or can speak in more technical terms than I can.
Gentlemen, the three components of it are three engineered designs that would make each of the project trails shovel-ready. So if you were able to pull down grant funding for implementation funds, these are like the requirement documents that you would need in order to get access to those funds. Although there are preliminary versions of these trails at each of the sites, they're largely undeveloped, Fort Edwards, for instance, is just moed woods. We're working section by section, but these plans would allow for eventual upgrades of trails that would be accessible to everybody. So that's, that's, that's the larger part of the product, and then the third product that, or the fourth product that you'd get here is that comprehensive study of the county and the suitability for a county-wide trail strategy. To answer Commissioner Cannon's question about the multi-county trail authority, that's a specific statute that enables these authorities created. It is largely modeled off of Hatfield and McCoy as in the success of it, but it's for non-motorized trail networks. So they've done a version of this in the center part of the state, think Morgantown, Fairmont, and the counties that surround there, and they've met tremendous success with the implementation of that. It provides for liability protection for a landowner, say, if a landowner says, yes, I'd allow your trail to come across my property, as this specific statute allows for a tremendous amount of protection for landowners that say, yep, we're, we're, we want trails, but we'd also like to be protected, too.
I did some research, see that Grant County was given a hundred and twenty-five thousand for trails and things, because it's definitely been seen to be a success to to add tourism, and and the Hatfield-McCoy coalition with all the different counties, it's brought a lot of tourism. But are you guys familiar with the, the roughly ten million dollars that was available from the governor, the Transportation Alternatives Recreational Trails grant? Did Grant County have to do, is that how they got that hundred and twenty-five thousand, because they did what you're asking us to do now? They did all those preliminary things?
The, the short answer...
Because I noticed we couldn't get that money, because I had asked.
The short answer, yeah, is that, yes, it makes it a lot more accessible. Unfortunately, that program is a really long flash-to-bang, but if you're standing there with shovel-ready development documents, it makes all of your applications a lot more attractive whenever you go for those implementation funds later on.
My, my understanding, and these two can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are paying about fifteen thousand for each part, each trail plan, where, and we're getting four plans, correct? And we would expect, if we, if we went in and said we're going to do just one, that would be between thirty and forty thousand. So the reason for bundling it is that we're getting more, and those plans, they will be unique to where they're being developed, but they can be used in other places in the county. They will be our plans that we can, correct, that we can use in other places in the county.
And and also, those plans are going to be, they'll be for those entities to use as well. It's not, this, we're here requesting the funds, but this is for county-wide trail planning. Like, we're just the people that are gonna, that are dealing with the paperwork and doing everything. But, but then we'll work with those groups as needed to do what they need to do, but those plans will belong to them. So Camp Walker, if it's running along the Disc Golf Trail, Hampshire County Parks and Rec is going to be involved in that, those are going to be their plans, and they'll see the, well, hopefully, we'll all see the, the fruits of the labor in that, but it's not, you know what I mean? It's, this isn't just a C V B project, it's, it's across the board, it's something that hopefully is going to impact all of us in a, in a positive way.
And and I, in, in reading all this, I, I felt that it should be under the Park and Recs anyway. However, if it's not, then we're going to be pulling them in, and we're, the county's going to have to be paying the people for Parks and Recs to do certain things, is that maintaining or what, or is the survey going to tell us this?
I think that's part of the, the engineering plan, yes.
When you do the, when you, are you going to go out for a bid on this, on this survey? Do you have to, do you have to go out for a bid?
For these funds, I don't think so, no?
I think we do. I mean, if we're, if we're going to give you, if we're going to give you money, you're going to have to, you're going to have to bid it out.
Anything over twenty-five thousand has to be.
We'll, we'll evaluate it. I mean, the...
Is it fifteen or twenty-five? Because we do have to follow the county's procurement policies.
It's, no, so there are one contract for sixty thousand, so it would be, it would cross the threshold into the five G process, but it's, there's, there's a handful of development firms in the, in the state. The process is going to be pretty straightforward.
And before I, before I forget, because I forget a lot, you were talking about the A R P fund. Erin's going to, as long as we have A R P funding, she is going to stick around and handle that. She's not doing any other, other grants, but she's going to be doing the A R P funding until we get it, because she's been doing the reporting, so she's going to be doing that. So in, in any way you get...
My, my position here is I'm just largely supporting these ladies in this effort. I'm representing the C V B pro bono for this, so I'll just help make sure that the process goes smoothly and do contract review. That way, the, we're getting the best, best bang for our buck with public funds.
I think it's a, I think it's a good direction to go in. I know Tucker County, there's trails everywhere. My wife likes to do them, so I get to drug along some. But, you know, I, I, I think it's something that could possibly help us here. Tina made some good points. I would like to see if, you know, if we can get it done a little cheaper, but, again, I, I support the general idea in hopes that we could, it, it just, it makes me cringe when I, when I see what we have to pay for a, a map or a, or a building schematic. Commissioner Cannon can, can vise that, but...
Yeah, it's outrageous.
It seems like when the county wants to do something, it's, it's just, but I know there's, it's red tape that's involved, and it's, it... That part of it's hard for me, but I like the idea.
This sixty thousand dollars was the result of negotiating the price downwards from a higher number by bundling. So although, yeah, we will do every effort that we can to, when we bid it out, to get the price lower, I think just realistic expectations are that, you know, it costs something similar to this to develop four separate plans. But, but we did, we, we have already made efforts, and we've already gained some ground in that regard.
I think anything...
We do this, when, when, as far as I'm concerned, when this, this survey, when they start this survey, or complete the survey, we're really going to have to look at this thing as far as security. I mean, there's, in this day and age, you know, it's, we're really going to have to look at it hard before we, we proceed. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I'm not, however, I'm like Commissioner Edgar, I think it's pricey, but, but I'm in favor of, I'm not, I'm not opposed to do it.
I, I agree with what Tina's, I think it's a step in the right direction to invite the right kind of customers to our county, to put it that way.
Which is priceless, yeah, really. It is expensive, it is expensive, the sixty thousand dollars, but we can pull more information and show you all some, and as a matter of fact, I think the folks that have done, I've been to two trail presentations that address, it's a lot of information, but it addresses some of those concerns, safety issues. It doesn't really address, like, how to keep people safe, it addresses more of what counties or the entities are or are not liable for, although there are, speaking of safety, like, I'm thinking about, you know, like, kind of crazy people, but speaking of safety, that's another thing. Your, your E M S would have to be involved in trail planning from beginning to end, because you have to have emergency spots. If anyone would need to be picked up, you have to have, you know, there, there are a lot of different facets to it, so it's, you know, our, our three little trails are going to be our way of getting our feet wet, but looking forward to the county-wide trail expansion, that's going to be a years-long project.
I think, I think talking to your, to the neighbors, you know, like I said, Tucker County has hundreds of them. They have maps and maps and...
Pocahontas County is huge.
And Pocahontas has a lot...
Pocahontas just hosted an international mountain biking...
There's, there's a lot of states on East Coast that has, that has one of them.
Oh, I think the West Virginia is becoming, we're coming to the forefront.
Logan, did, did we agree that, are we going to have to bid on this? Maybe I didn't hear you.
We will. I'll, I'll look back over the code section, because it's controlled by a code section. I'll verify, but, yeah, my...
Yeah, I think definitely we would have, if, if the commissioner granted the funds, yeah.
I understand it. There's, there's a few exceptions for things, and I don't think this qualifies for one of them, but...
So for the sake of time, gentlemen, we, I'm trying to keep us somewhat on schedule. What do we want to do here?
I move that we authorize and approve the request from the C V B, and, and I do know in saying that, that when, when Logan has been doing other things, he's, if, if there's money left over, he's, it's came back to us, or made available to us, so...
Yeah, I'll second, and that was my question, is if there is excess funds, would that come back to the commissioner? Would that be used for further trail development?
Well, it wouldn't basically be, be spent the way we're visualizing this.
Okay, okay.
Whatever, yes.
That's enough. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to grant the request of the C V B for the Trails Initiative Planning Project, please signify by saying aye.
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 And also, that'll come out of A R P funding, so...
Motion passed.
I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Back in with Lynn up.
The next thing on the agenda, Clark, we have just a general A R P applicant's request item there listed.
It's for the, the A E Ds and the fairground building.
Okay. Okay, and I'm told that will be, Mrs. Timbrook will present that.
Hello.
Morning.
How are you guys?
Almost afternoon now.
Yeah. So we have, I guess, two applications, three, two.
One was the, the fairground building, and one was A E Ds?
Yes.
And one A E D, they haven't, they haven't done an application after the last three.
Right. I spoke to Mr. Roomsburg, and I forwarded him the applications. I know the, the Just Behind Us project, however, I have not received his paper application back yet, and I think that has to do with some family, a death in the family, so if we want to move forward on that one, I feel confident enough to, to, to explain that one to you guys. The A E Ds from the Park and Recs, they're looking to put an A E D at Central, at Central Hampshire Park, no, Cape, Old Cape and Bridge Middle School and Hampshire Park, in the new buildings. And then Mr. Roomsburg was looking to put three A E Ds at the Ballfields, one in Pawpaw, one in Romney, and one in Cape and Bridge. I think that if we can bundle those, they would probably give us a discount if that was something you all wanted to do, A E Ds across the county. That's, we can work that application to make it.
What's the current cost of those, approximately?
I think about fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and sadly, I think it is cheaper to, or feasibly more...
To replace than, than update?
Replace the whole unit than to buy batteries and A E D pads. And then Mr. Oates for the fairgrounds would like assistance with fixing up the, the cinder block building, and that's putting in new flooring, roughing in a bathroom, replacing some doors and windows, and putting in a, I think they're called split systems, the H, what is it? Mini-split, the, for heating and air, so the building can be used year-round.
And one of the reasons that I, I feel that, that is justified is that that building has sat there for the last couple of years, and then we haven't been able to use it. And then this year, we had the Sportsman Show, and we could really, we had people lined up everywhere trying to get into, see the, the different displays and so forth, and the vendors that they had there. So I feel that this is a, and Erin has looked at this and agreed that it falls under the guidelines of the V R P, so I move that we go ahead and approve... So I move that we go ahead and approve. Do we-
What was the amount?
It was forty, I-
Forty-four-five, I think, or forty-three-five?
Forty-something, yeah. I don't have it with me. I got, I had it, but I don't have it.
Did you want to just approve forty-five, or?
Well, it, it wasn't over that. I, I just approved up the app. Do you have the, copy that application?
I can pull it up.
Let her pull it up.
Or up to forty-five, or up to fifty?
Let her pull it up there. I, I don't know why I don't have it with me, but I, I don't.
It promotes outdoor, outdoor activity and, yeah, that's good, good, good.
It does the outdoor activity. It gives the county an extra emergency shelter for reunification. It-
If we'd ever, yeah, if we ever had anything catastrophic, we could use that building.
Good.
And we're, we're using the electric, we're hooking it up so it can be run by a generator if we had to. And like I said, it'll help with the Sportsman Show. There'll be a lot more vendors be able to get in there. So it's, it'll be, it'll be a good thing, I feel. I don't know why I don't have a copy of it, but I had, I had copies of the others. I should.
It was forty-four-five.
Okay.
And that did have, we, I did, I helped Pumpkin, Pumpkin with his figures, and I told him to add in a ten percent cushion just because it is construction work and we never know how it's been.
Yeah, you sent those to, to us, I remember now, yeah. Yeah, I would second Mr. Hott's motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second for the approval of the ARP application for the building at the Fair Grounds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, she had mentioned the, the AED units for the Little League. Is that, is that correct?
Malcolm, actions, Little League.
Yeah. Do we want to wait for some paperwork on that? Gentlemen, I, I think it's a legitimate request and, and something I would be willing to fund, but we don't have any paperwork as of yet, and I guess-
We have the Park and Recs paperwork.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just, like I said-
How many, how many's the Park and Recs, three?
Two.
Two.
And Mr. Roomberg wanted just one for each Little League field?
Yes.
So that'd be five, and, and they're cheaper with ordering five and would be order-
Well, I can ask. I mean, it-
I, I'd move that we approve up to five AED devices between Parks and Rec and Little League.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, Ms. Timbrook, continue to work with these entities for the purchase through the application of ARP of five AED units. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
If you guys are okay with it, I'll work with Mr. Malcolm and use his vendor and see if he can order them through Stryker or whoever so that we can get that.
Yeah. Anywhere you can save money, I'm always for that.
All right.
Okay.
That is it, as far as I know. Do you have anything else for me?
I thought you said you had three, so did I miss it?
Well, I combined it, combined.
The AEDs were three.
The two AEDs.
Okay, okay.
And then the other two.
I got you now, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we're still running behind, but we have ten forty-five volunteer rescue squad response rates. And I don't see Mr. Malcolm here. Do we have any information on that?
Did you ever send that down? Did you ask him to?
No, I did not.
No, I-
Brian, you talked about Springfield you'd looked at. Remember a while back, and they were, you said forty percent? Did you look at that?
Yeah, that's, Mr. Malcolm and, and the board had brought to the attention that the rates have been below fifty percent, which some time ago, we, we implemented a policy that we would request that the, the volunteers try to stay around that number, or, or obviously a lot better. There has been some struggle that they've been under that, and then recently, it's been much lower. I don't want to quote those numbers without-
Well, and to help you, one was, one was twenty-six percent. And there was, I think, two, two squads that were down in that same, same frame, I think in twenty, twenty-seven percent. And as you've said, Commissioner, we had, we, we, we sent letters to the, to, to companies a year or so ago and notified them that we were no longer going to be paying their insurance for their, for their units. I believe that's, is that what we decided? The insurance part, paying for their insurance?
Yes, correct. That, that was what the commission agreed to there a few years back. That's, that's been a couple years at least, but it's, you know, when you get down to a certain percentage and, and you, and you've, you put on paper the investment per call, you know, you're, the, the county dollars are, are getting really steep when you get down in the twenty and ten and, and thirty percent response rate. You know, the, the money you're investing in that is, is, you know, there's a certain amount of investment sending, sending the squad out there. When, when, when you get that low, it, it really becomes expensive. So that, you know, that's why we encourage the, the good response rates.
Commissioner, I'll go ahead and, and move that the county commission send letters to the, the rescue squads that are performing under fifty percent and notify them that their, the, that their insurance coverage is, is going to be terminated, as we have done in the past with, with other, other rescue squads.
Gentlemen, I would like to mention one thing, you know, upon hours and hours of phone calls and research, I do notice that a lot of the times, we have great volunteers that either quit or are affected by various decisions, in my opinion, because of bad leadership. So I feel like a lot of times, this commission's penalized an, an institution like that for basically a failure of leadership. I feel like we're, you know, I don't want to be redundant, but I can clearly see why some of these volunteers quit and don't want to work for certain leaders in those organizations because of their personalities and their approach to teaching individuals and just being a leader, you know? And I, I just feel like maybe fifty percent's a little, little harsh, in my opinion, but I, I do recognize that the leadership needs some work, so I will concede to that.
Is that a second?
No, it's not.
All right, well, I'll second the, the motion presented by Commissioner Hott. And all those in favor of the letter in response to response rates, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes two to one.
And, and let me address, Mr. Cannon, since we, and, and you're, you're exactly right. I, I know you're right, but we have no control. We have no control with those people. And if we did, we could, we could try to correct that ourselves, but we, we don't. And that's, that's, that's the bad part of it. We just don't have any control over, over the volunteers, and, and every word you spoke is true. It is true. But we also got to be realistic about it, too, I think.
I, I agree. I, I, I agree with that. Just, it definitely, definitely scares me thinking about any one of those entities throw, throwing in the white, you know, throwing in the towel, waving the white flag and, and being completely done, because we're just not at a point that we can subsidize those areas completely. And I, and whether it's limping along, which I'll agree to, or whether it's, however you want to look at it, it's a means to an end, in my opinion, and I just really think we ought to, I like to go to sleep saying that I did everything I possibly can. And I'm not saying you gentlemen haven't. I'm just saying, in my opinion, differs maybe on a fifty percent as, as the chosen percentage point, but I do agree that there has to be a percentage point where the juice isn't worth the squeeze, but it's just, damn it, we're, we're penalizing good, hard-working, smart people because of their leaders, and that, that, you know, and like you said, we can't do a whole lot about that, but anyways.
Okay. Clerk Stright, do we have any other maintenance items? And also, I wanted to point out the Fair Housing Act. There's a, what we do every year, gentlemen, that document is in, in my mail, but I would like to go ahead, since that's a yearly thing that we do, go ahead and approve my signature for that. It's the same.
Resolution they say every year is that the commission's committed to Fair Housing in equal opportunity?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
That motion's downstairs from the full board of the Senate regarding that.
I'd move we authorize the president to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we renew the annual Fair Housing Act and get those documents to Regent Eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now, I'm sorry, clerk, you, you started on something else?
No, I appreciate you. We called under old business the last week, and then Ryan came asking for some pay raises for some, for, to help with retention. And, and we're, so we have to bring our maintenance staff to fifty dollars an hour, including one of our housekeepers and then a part-time housekeeper to vote for them.
He's asking for two more positions?
I'm sorry?
He's asking for two part-time positions?
No, we have two more.
Okay, okay. That's current, all current. Those, that's all current jobs, right?
Do you see this?
Do you already see this, Bob?
I think that's a pretty fair ask, personally.
All right, gentlemen, you both reviewed the proposal. Do I hear a motion to the order of granting this request?
I'll, I'll move that we approve the request.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to grant the pay raises proposed by Maintenance Supervisor Kenny McBride for the four maintenance, or five maintenance positions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Gentlemen, I forgot to report that the roof on the multi-tented building was completed. I was asked if I would take a look at it, so I did get up on the roof and just, it's, it's definitely a new technology and it's, I was pretty impressed with it. It's really thick membrane, and I can send you some pictures, but for the, literally cutting our cost in half, I thought it was well worth the money. So anyways, the roof's complete down there.
That was the, that's where we gave one-hundred-and-sixty-five?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, we gave it, it was already close to two-hundred thousand this year.
Well, yeah, they were asking for like three-eighty-five to do rubber on it, and, and that's when I did a lot of research and-
Before, before we do go, well, we got to do the invoices. I received a call from, when I was away last week, from, from Richard Gay, and he was, was getting ready to file, but the public housing, Romney Public Housing has, has retained a new attorney, Mr. Walters, from, from Moorfield. So Mr. Gay, Mr. Walters indicated that he wanted to talk with Mr. Gay and, and the Public Housing Authority in, more in-depth, so he was going to wait to file that till after he talked to, to Mr. Walters.
Okay.
I just want to let you guys-
Did he want you to be there as one commissioner?
No, he didn't say anything about that. He just said he was going to, because when he called me, I told him as far as I was, that I was going to inform you guys and that I was okay for him to, to delay it until he talked to Mr. Walters.
Thank you. The, the time capsule, did Rebecca reach out about the time capsule?
I haven't heard another word about that. You know, I haven't, I haven't heard another word about that.
All right, all right. Thank you for those updates, gentlemen. Anything else, clerk?
From the personnel, I'm asking for some funds to approve some of the, in my office on there above.
They were included in the, the new fiscal year raise? So you're kind of trying to make it retroactive?
No, no retroactive, this is just what I'm going to do this pay period.
Fair enough.
And covered within his budget.
Ah, Roger that. I, I would move we approve the document as presented by the clerk on behalf of Marion Chan Holton, Rebecca Lewis, Deputy Clerk.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the pay raises to the two individuals. Just stated, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, we have two CDs that are being advanced. They're existing CDs with Michael Romney. They've rated to obtain a better rate, and so they're asking for signatures on that. The creditors asking for signature on that.
Gentlemen, I really think about that. I haven't seen the percentage yet, but the PBTA was offered five-point-two-five percent on their CDs. When comparing them to these institutions, significant difference. But I, just knowing what I know, I'm sure it's not that.
These are existing CDs, so they're just changing rates on current, current CDs to current remaining term.
One percent?
Is that what you're seeing there?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner?
One percent on that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's absolutely ridiculous, in my opinion, based on current market. And all the CDs that we've been rolling over from our other boards are far, far above those amounts.
These are a sixty-month term that began past March.
What's this, a two percent?
Two-point-five, I think.
Five, right.
Two-point-five-three.
Well, you can, we can always have to wait and have the sheriff negotiate more.
Like I said, you want to propose to, to negotiate or shop around there on this then, or?
That would be my motion.
Do I hear a sec, second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission hold off and, and look into the rates for the CDs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We have a budget revision. We have a budget revision, just moving some funds that have come in and give them the right calls. come in and give them the right calls.
I'm moving that we approve the budget revisions as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the budget revisions presented by Clerk Strike be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. All right, before we do invoices, I would entertain any public comment. We only got two public left. So if you ladies have any questions, comments?
Let's see one we have, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, we didn't mess around. Had a lot of business to address.
Lots of business.
All right, clerk, we'll look at the invoices then.
Parks and Rec, get their tennis courts. I haven't been down there. Remember we approved the tennis court for the, the ball court?
I flew to there the other day. He called. They committed an invoice, but I guess he said they're getting ready to do.
Oh, good, good. Thank you.
I'm not sure if we can just simply, like, we can have forty-one and a half, or thirty-one and a half, so.
Right. Where's this, rent, rent? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's over at the court.
Yeah.
Okay. Move we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the invoices since our last meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed.
I don't think we'll point, monitor that we have our court utilization review handbook meeting tomorrow at ten. Did you get a copy?
Tomorrow at ten, here.
Wage board.
Wait.
Wage, you said board of equalization.
Yeah. Wage and handbook, yeah, yes.
Oh, you guys look at it.
Brian, you'll represent that?
Yes.
Okay.
And what, what did you say? No, not yet. I'll look at that before tomorrow.
I'd move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.